Tonight's commission meeting, September 3rd, 2015, the year of our Lord. Just a real quick announcement before we get started. Mayor Taylor is out of state, visiting family, and Commissioner Merka will be joining us a little later on in the commission meeting. I'd like to have the invocation done by Commissioner McCray, and the Pledge of Allegiance be led by Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Let us bow. Almost hold that eternal God, heavenly Father, the Creator and Maker of all mankind. We come this afternoon just to tell you thank you. Thank you for the things that we take for granted. Individuals, take them personally, and I mean by that, they take them so that it's a way for them to live, live a better life. As we deliberate tonight, let us deliberate with love, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Although we might disagree, but when we walk out of here, let us walk out of with love, with all of our mankind, in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will take the roll call, please.
Mayor Taylor, absent.
Here.
Commissioner David Vernon.
Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Here.
There's a call.
Thank you. Under the addition, deletions, and corrections of the agenda, Commissioner McCray, you have any?
At this time.
I'd like to pull six I off of consent.
I would like to, if I can just get it right here, I want to ask that we remove 10B from the agenda, and we're going to move under bids and purchases, 7B, 1, and 2 to other, make that 2C.
B. Want to make that 2B, Vice Mayor, and then push B to C, information items, third.
C to B.
Okay. We could do that.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, repeat, please.
We're going to move 7B, 1, and 2 to 2C, correct?
You want to probably have it before the information items by the commissioners.
We'll make it 2B.
Yes.
Which one are we doing?
The medical insurance.
That's the insurance issue.
The insurance issue. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Before we make a motion, I'm not going to pull these items, but when we get to 7A, I need to discuss, and also there's another thing, under the city manager, I would be discussing. That's why I did not pull any items. Motion to approve as amended.
Second. I guess, I guess I got a second and everything.
Aye.
It passes. Okay. Going to go to conduct the first public budget hearing for 2015, 2016, proposed annual operating budget. And that's one of the reasons why we're having the meeting tonight instead of Tuesday. It's the budget constraint timelines that we have to follow. That's why this meeting's being held on Thursday night, for those who are wondering why. So I guess the first proposed resolution is to adopt the proposed millage rate for the general fund for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a brief presentation, very few modifications to what was presented to the commission at the July budget workshops. And we do have some copies of the PowerPoint in the back. We only probably have about 20 copies if people would like copies to take home or follow along. And Tim Howard is going to take us through the PowerPoint, and I'll chime in as fit.
Vice Mayor, let me just add a word for the benefit of the public. This is the first of two statutorily required public hearings regarding the upcoming year's millage rate and budget. Members of the public have a role in this process. You are permitted to come up after the presentation to ask questions about the budget or make comments about the budget, as well as the millage rate. There'll be a second public hearing, which will be held on September the 15th at 6:30. That will be the final budget and millage hearing for this year's upcoming budget. There's also a hearing on September the 10th. That's a Thursday. It's the time when the city considers the final fire assessment rate. Those are funds that are raised as an assessment to real property related to the fire department operations.
Howard. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Like the manager said, we'll have a brief presentation. You've seen most of it at the public workshop in July that we held at the library. First slide is just to give you an overview of the overall budget for the city. It's 211 million for all the funds, 76.5 for the general fund. And then the action tonight is to review and adopt a proposed millage and a tentative budget. And then, like the attorney said, the final will be adopted on the 15th. Tonight you do the adoption of the proposed millage and the tentative budget. Thursday, September 10th is the final hearing for the fire assessment rate at 6:00 PM. And then Tuesday, September 15th, is the second public budget hearing to adopt the final millage and the final budget for next year. You've got a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you. Some of these slides are going to be difficult for you to read, just because of the amount of data that's on it. This slide just shows you what, from the proposed budget that's on the website. If you remember, in the July workshop, there was a list of adjustments that the city manager proposed. This is that list as far as adjusting expenditures and adjusting revenues. The first few, the top, is that we adjusted the amount of the health insurance, increased from 20% down to 15%. So we were able to reduce the expenditures by 225,000. We reduced the funds for potential wage increases for next year by 200,000, lowering it from 3% to 2%. 3% is already in there for the PVA, which was negotiated. We had a reorganization of the golf course, and we were able to reduce that transfer to the golf course by 103,000. We removed a planning and zoning intern that was in the proposed budget document that's online. Also adjusted funding for building official and city engineer that reduced some expenditures. We eliminated an economic development coordinator that reduced the economic development budget by 67,000. And we removed the matching funds for the AFG Fire Grant that's been applied for, for 98,400. If we applied for this last year and did not receive it, if we receive it this year when we come back for the commission to accept it, we'll budget the match more than likely out of fund balance. On the revenue side, we were able to increase a couple of the state revenue sharing, or state revenues, based on finalized estimates from the state, one being state revenue sharing. We increased that 100,000. Sales tax revenue, we increased by 100,000. Let me see if I can, that would be... We increased the revenue from ALS, or the ambulance transport, by 100,000. We revised and negotiated the Village of Gulf Fire Service contract, which increased the revenue from that source by 42,000. When you take all of that into account, the proposed budget that's online had an amount of fund balance to be used of $1.588 million, and with these adjustments, that amount has now decreased to 450,000. This is a pie chart of all the funds and the expenditure budgets that is in front of you to adopt. It shows that the total expenditure budget's 211 million for the city. The four major ones, general fund is 76.5, or 36% of the overall budget. Utility is 42.2, which is 20% of the budget. Capital funds is 51 million, which is 24.5%. And solid waste is 12.4, which is 5.9%. The other smaller ones are down, whoops, are on down the list, and the pie chart equates to it. This slide is the funding sources to fund the 211 million. The largest revenue source in the city is the utility fees at 42.2 million. Property taxes at 29.5 million. And then capital and bond sources, and then transfers between the funds. This is a list of all the funds that are budgeted, that's contained in the resolution that you have in front of you to adopt for tonight, and it totals the 211 million. It lists the general fund, the enterprise funds, which include the utility, the solid waste, the golf course, internal service funds, which is the fleet, the warehouse and the self-insurance, certain special revenue funds, local option gas tax, public art, traffic safety, which is the red light camera, the capital improvement funds, which is the general capital and the utility capital, and then the debt service funds to pay the debt service payments on our public service outstanding bond. This is a chart for the general fund alone, proposed expenditures of 76.5. It's an increase over last year's budget of 3.4 million, or 4.8% over the 1415 budget. It shows you that personnel services, including pension, makes up 58.9 million, or 77% of the general fund budget. And then the pie pieces will show you the breakdown of personal services expenses, excluding pension. Then it has a pension contribution amount, which is 12.7 million. Operating expenses, capital outlay, and then non-operating expenses. This is another pie chart of the general fund depicting the expenses grouped by category or by service area. Police, fire, public works, general government, development, recreation, library, IT, and finance, and human resources. This slide shows you the increase over last year's budget, which comes to 3.4 million. Last year's adopted budget was 73 million. This year's proposed budget is 76.5. So it's a $3.4 million increase roughly over last year. We just listed some major changes in expenditures to show you where the 3.4 million is applied to. Health insurance increase that's in the budget is going up 820,000. Potential wage increase is 750,000 for the general fund. Pension increase went up 527,000. Self-insurance allocation went up 344. The transfer to the golf fund is a new transfer that we have not had in the general fund. It's 240,000 this year. Capital outlay expenses across the departments that are included in the general fund went up 105. And then this coming year, we have an election, which we didn't have this year, so we have a $71,000 expense this year that we didn't have last year, and that totals 2.8 million. So it's just showing you some major areas.
That election cost, is that a fixed cost every year, the same?
No, only when we have a scheduled municipal or federal election.
But is it always 71,000? No?
Nope, depending on what's on the ballot, I think.
It all depends.
What's on the ballot?
What the, we don't know the supervisor of election costs yet. We approximated them. We're really not sure. We never know that right up front.
And it will change if they change precincts over the last couple of years, add or to subtract, or number of poll workers, and things like that. These next two slides, we broke them into two slides this, for tonight, to try to make the print a little larger for people to see. This is a listing of all, of the departments that are in the general fund, and the budget from this year, and then the proposed budget to next year, and then the increase amount, and then the percent that increases per department. And it lists city commission manager, city hall, the three police pieces. This continues on with fire, development, building, planning and zoning, economic development, engineering. So you can see at the total, it's, the total for this year is 73 million, for the proposed budget, 76.5. Just, it's just another representation of the $3.4 million increase. This slide shows you the major proposed revenue changes that are in the general fund for 15, 16. Property taxes increased 3.1 million. Out of that, based on the increase in values within the CRA, the CRA portion increased 798,000. So our net increase in property taxes for this, that the city will retain, is 2.3 million. Florida Power Light is a franchise utility tax that we receive. That's going up 400,000 based on current estimates. Business tax, we've been in a phase of making sure that businesses that are in the city are, have their BTR, and so we were able to increase that estimate by 165,000. Building permits, we're having a good year, as people know, that the construction's going on, so that's up 200,000. And then the state shared revenue and the sales tax, and the ambulance service went up a couple hundred thousand for state shared, 300 for sales tax. And then the transfers at the bottom, due to the refunding of the bond issue, the, we were able to transfer $200,000 more out of the utility, the public service tax fund into the general fund. So that transfer went up from 6 million to 6.2 million. The utility transfer went up $250,000. The solid waste transfer went down $500,000. And the fund balance that's needed, in the current budget, we have 951,000 to be used. And then in the proposed budget, that number's reduced to 450,000. And that totals a $3.4 million increase. This chart shows you that the general fund, the proposed funding sources is 76.5. The property tax levy is being proposed to remain the same at 7.9 mils, which will generate $29.5 million to the general fund. And then it lists the different categories of revenues that we have within the general fund, intergovernmental charges for services, the fire assessments in there, franchise fees, licenses and permits. This chart shows you what, how our fund balance is looking in the general fund at the end of each fiscal year for the last number of years. The blue line, which is the top line, whoops, top line, is the total fund balance. The bottom line is the amount that's required, that we have by policy set for a reserve for emergencies, which is 10% of the upcoming budget, adopted budget amount. So at the end of 2007, we had 18.9 million total in fund balance, and 7.4 was set aside for emergencies. And our projection for the end of 2015 is it will have $11.5 million in fund balance, and 7.7 will be set aside for emergency reserve.
Does that exceed that 10% that we talked about?
Yes, the 11.5 is total, and 7.7 is part of that 11.
Okay.
Yep. This slide shows you the proposed millage rate at 7.9, the taxes that it will generate. There's no tax rate increase. It shows you the comparison of the rollback rate on property tax value, which is 7.3762. And the rollback rate is the rate that you would set a millage at to generate the same dollar level of property taxes to the city as we did last year. Because we had value increases, that amount is less than what the current millage is. If you would go with the rollback rate of 7.37, if you follow the calculations all the way down, based on the proposed budget, we would in essence need $2 million more of revenue in other sources, or reduce expenditures by $2 million to use the rollback rate to fund the proposed budget. This is just an analysis of the assessed values and ad valorem taxes over, from 2009, 10 through 15, 16. What it shows is that we had the decrease in values, and the last three years, we've experienced increases in taxable values in the city to about a 16% increase in total taxes levied from 2009, 10 to present. And then it also shows you the increase in the CRA taxes. This slide is required by the Florida statute to be disclosed at the public hearings. The proposed ad valorem tax rate, 7.9 mils. It's no rate increase from the current 7.9 mils. The actual tax rate is 7.10% per the state trim calculations over the rollback rate, which is 7.3762. Citywide property values increased approximately 10.08%. The commission had adopted a proposed millage rate of 7.9 at its July workshops. This slide shows the number of properties in the city that, based on their valuation and their adjusted for homestead exemption, pays less than $200 in taxes. The number of properties are, have went from 8,900 in 2011 to 7,200 in 2014. This slide is two scenarios based on property values and the increase in what will, their actual tax rate will be, or tax amount will be for the city, based on the proposed millage rate and the current millage rate. What this shows is the, if you have a house that's currently assessed last, this passed year at $375,000, the Save Our Home law caps the increased, the taxable increase to either 3% or the CPI, whichever is lower. And what's been sent, what's out on the proposed tax bills right now is a 0.8% increase in taxable value. So that $375,000 value will go up to 378,000. This is on a homesteaded property, so you reduce it by $50,000, and then imply our, the millage rate that we, that the city has currently, and what the proposed millage rate is, which is 7.9 on both years. And what you see is that the annual tax bill goes from $2,568 to $2,591. If you do that into monthly, it's an increase of about $1.97 per month. The scenario on the right-hand side of the chart of the slide is an assessed value of $175,000 house, and that would increase to 176,400. And you can follow, it's the same methodology. This slide is for non-homesteaded property, commercial properties, and the two scenarios are a property valued at $1 million and a property valued at $500,000. These are non-homesteaded, so they have no homestead exemption, and the Save Our Home cap doesn't apply to this. So they would experience the 10% increase in average-wise to their properties that this, based on the citywide average increase. So the $1 million property would increase its value to $1,001 million. And if you apply the 7.9 mils, their annual property taxes would increase from 7,900 to 8,700. And the $500,000 is on the right-hand side of the slide. That concludes the brief presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Tim, first of all, I want to tell you, and Tony, thank you for doing a fantastic job with the budget. My stinkler is always that just because the money's in the budget, we don't have to spend it. 2014, 2015, how much money did we have left for public information?
For this year that we're anticipating at the end? Right now, very conservatively, I'm looking at to the, let's say we had, let me get my Increasing the fund balance from 11.2 million to probably 11.5, 11.6. You know, it's maybe increase half a million dollars.
Half a million. Okay, I'm going to make this...
And that could very well be more.
Right. I'm going to make this statement because I go around from different departments, particularly the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm bombarded by, you know, people that work on the board, and they tell me that they've been requesting supplies, and they tell them that they'll have no money, not until October the 1st. The things that they're requesting cost less than $50. And it bothers me, I'm just saying, you know, but when I come back to the city manager and assistant city manager, the money's there. I don't know who's giving the information, you know, that don't, these are things that they need. If you need it, you ought to buy it. So I'm going to ask the city manager, I need the Parks and Recreation budget. I need to buy Recreation Apartments, Carolyn Sims, et cetera. I need to know how much money's in those budgets individually, and what was left over, because it bothers me when they tell me that they don't have any money, and they can't buy anything until October the 1st, which I know they can, which we did.
I think we do have a breakdown in our revenue fund by site, Wally. Do we, yeah, so we'd be able to provide the, yes, I can get that for you, absolutely.
Thank you. That's it for now. Come back after everybody else says something else.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I'd just like to commend staff for putting this together. I'm happy to see we're not there yet as far as a balanced budget and actually putting any money into the reserves before the end of the year, but we're approaching, we're approaching that, so it's an improvement over last year. So I think we're headed in the right direction.
I'd like to thank staff also. I think you, it's not a simple process, I know, but you've simplified it enough so, you know, us commissioners in the public can understand it quite well. The question I have is, under special revenue funds, the traffic safety, $822,000. Do we cover that with our, the revenue generated by the red light cameras?
Based on recent decisions by the commission, I went and estimated the cost of the new agreement that we have in place, and the intent is the regeneration of fines and payments will cover that. But that's where it's paid, yes, that's what it's covered out of.
That's just an estimate that we will have the revenue to cover that, $822,000.
Right, to cover the lease payments and the administrative costs.
I know it's, I know it's still in some of the courts, it's still going through the court process. If this turns out to be that we need to shut off all the cameras because of a ruling handed down, what do we, what do we do with the revenue versus what we laying out here?
I, I'll answer and may defer to Jim. If we get to that point at some time during the year, I, that decision will come back to the commission at that time. We'll be at a point to give you an update on the status of the fund and see what, you know, what happens. If we shut it down, the assumption will be that the payments will stop because of a legal issue, which will then affect, and we would reexamine the fund and give you a report on that.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about capital improvement budget. Okay, I'm going to talk about Sarah Sims Park. I spoke to the city manager, because I've been getting a lot of phone calls from citizens who's concerned about the derelict of the park over there. They're saying that is, should even be called a park, which I do agree. And I recognize that we have it in the capital budget for probably the next two years before we do something major at Sarah Sims Park. But I'm also explaining to the citizens that the process is a lengthy process. It takes about a year for us to even get what we're going through now, to get everything in shape and in place before we can move on a capital master plan for Sarah Sims. But I don't want them to think, and I wanted to go out tonight saying that we are in the hopper. Money's in the budget. We have budgeted for capital improvements, but it's not our time yet. We're just kind of on a wait and hope. But whatever we need to do at Sarah Sims, it will be done to keep us in operation. Thank you. Thank you.
I just got one more on the, the golf course, the enterprising funds, they'll go over $2 million, and we're kind of, not kind of, we are subsidizing $200,000 towards the golf course this year.
Correct.
Is, with the new rate structure that's been set for the golf course, will that new rate structure absorb that $200,000 supplement that you need now?
I don't expect it to absorb the $200,000 supplement. I think we'll, we'll need this year to, this upcoming year to see what the impact to the revenue is based on the new rate structure. I would assume that it may help some of it. I think it's going to be a wait and see type, and it's something that we need to monitor month to month, every quarter, just to see how it's coming.
Vice Mayor, you know, but part of that, that increase and the need to reach into the general fund for some assistance is, the golf course, you know, financially has deferred some maintenance items, and that we can no longer do that. And, you know, I told Ron, I said, we need, we need to put it, get it in a budget, get it identified, and the commission will decide as an overall policy where we want to head with that. But that's, I think it's more from a maintenance perspective of some of the increases that we need in fertilizer and some other things, different types of improvements to make out there. That's what we're seeing, that, that increase and the need. And we're hoping with those, obviously with those improvements, that we have, we're more competitive with other golf courses and increase our players.
At this time, we'll open up the floor, public input on the budget. Anybody who'd like to speak, please come down to the silos and come to the podium, give your name and address, please.
John McGovern, 3929 Palladium Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, 33436. I actually have three questions. The first one comes from page 10. Total pension expenses of 12.7 million... Total pension expenses of $12.7 million. The last time I heard the mayor address the challenges of the pension plan, I think I heard him say that the biggest problem we had at that time, and this is about a year ago, was the loss of revenue over expenses of about $8 million principally caused by loss of return on investments, which I can understand, given that market. However, I'm wondering how much of that $12.7 million is not only per employee-related, but necessary expense in order to keep the defined benefit plan at maximum funding, at the, at the, what would you call it? The actuarial analysis level needed to keep it healthy?
That's gonna be-
That briefly. Can I answer that briefly? It's a tough one.
The city contributions for the, for each of the plans is done on an actuarial basis report. When the actuary does a report, they include, one, the returns that they, that the fund has made, two, the projection of future benefits based on mortality tables and age of participants. They determine the amount that is, that's required for an annual contribution. They then reduce out the amount of expected employee contributions, and whatever's left is what the city needs to contribute for that year. I don't know the percentage of the, what's attributable to one of the factors or another offhand. You know, the actuary reports are online. I can look at them and see if there's a page in there that does a split. I'm not sure if it does or not, to be honest with you.
Well, again, I'm just living off of the comment by the mayor that in that year, which I think is last year, it amounted to 8% of approximately $12 million, that it was an added expense to the city to make up for that loss of 8%.
Right. They also, they also take the gains and losses and average them over a number of years. So it's, there's a smoothing effect to the plan itself. That's why it's real hard to say which, for me right now, which amount, what part of it is for the, the return on the, the investment. And it's hard because they, they had a good year, but the smoothing out of the losses over the last number of years is, is sort of mixed into that for the current year. Let me look and see what I can-
We can follow up on that individually. Thank you. When I got in the mail, the annual required report on the condition of the water, there were two pie charts in that report, and when I looked at them real quickly, it looked as if the expenses were far lower than the revenues. Is it, is it true to say that the water department is probably not only a most efficient department, but it's a source of net gain for the city?
I can't recall the pie charts that were, that were in the document.
It was astounding. But, and I can't find the comparable numbers in this report. They're kind of buried.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure what they were presenting in that, that water report. I don't know if it excluded debt service payments. I don't know if it-
Probably.
So that-
Because the pie chart, I think, was oversimplified. It looked like revenues exceeded expenses by about 60-some-odd percent.
Yeah, I mean-
So something was wrong with those charts.
The utility department obviously does generate excess revenues that is, part of its transfer to the general fund that's noted on one of the slides. But again, without looking at that, I'm not really able to respond to that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Right, let me just jump in and say, you know, with the water department, there's a lot of large revenue things that they're doing now, and what it is, like all of the things they see replacing, pipes and lines like that. We got a lot of heavy capital improvements that's coming down, so that pie chart's gonna start looking like real small.
Okay. And the last question is from page 12. The decrease of 22% relating to economic development, does that imply that someone else's budget is going to add or incorporate that?
No. One of the previous slides that, earlier in the presentation, was that one of the adjustments that, that the city manager and I recommended at the workshop was the elimination of a position in that department that's vacant, and so that is that decrease.
All right. Thank you very much.
And Mr. McGovern, I'll have Colin Groff, our utility director, give you a call tomorrow and chat with you about the water report, because I know he can-
Yeah, much better than I am.
Shed some light on that.
Sure, thank you, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Brant. I live at 8919 Thumbwood Circle, Boynton Beach, 33436. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to talk, but I'm a Florida girl, and when you're talking about the budget, I would like to see our high school saved. My ancestors came in 1921. My dad was born in 1925. So please consider us Floridians in your budget. We want our history.
Lulu DeCamera, 836 East Drive, 2015 Secretary for In, in Lakove Association, INCA, excuse me. Good evening, Vice Mayor Casello and Commissioners. INCA's properties are in the CRA district, and understand the CRA cannot budget for And I may have missed it in this presentation, but I don't see any money scheduled for maintenance. I know you've heard the expression, "A picture is worth a thousand words," and we would respectfully request that the new budget contain funding for maintenance of existing amenities citywide, and also to include the landscaping on North Federal Highway, because we feel the city's appearance affects property values, future development possibilities, et cetera. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, would you like to-
It's in there.
Yes, yes. If we, but this is a very high-level presentation of our budget, or the, we do have departmental, very specific line items, and I can reassure you that the maintenance funds are provided in our public works, our streets maintenance budgets and so forth, landscaping. We've actually increased the budget a little bit for litter control, to be able to bring some help in for that, and have slowly restored our landscape budgets to be able to obviously maintain what we've been able to restore on federal highway and other medians throughout the city. So it's there.
And let me just jump in. District 2 has been given a little bit more money. I'm just saying, like, for picking up litter and stuff like that, so it'd be beautified. So we, I did not sit up there and keep my eyes closed and say, "I'm not gonna let us get any money. We got some." Thank you.
Harpsus, 1711 Woodford Drive, Boynton Beach. I was at the budget meeting for many years. I was at this last budget meeting, which was very well-done. I want to thank the double Ts, Tim and, Tim and Tony, the double T. What a dynamite situation that is. Compliment them. As you know, I was standing firm for an 8% increase of the millage rate, but at least the sensible situation is, I fought, lost, but basically keep it at 7.9. The period is that if you, pay me now or pay me later, keep the 7.9, because next year, the way the economy is, the way everything is, I think they're gonna be increases, and we have to cover our rear, so keep it at 7.9. I implore upon the commission. Otherwise, I'm gonna try to make that an election issue. Keep it at 7.9. Do not go any, because if we go down to 7.8, it'll be a loss of approximately $350,000 to $375,000. We cannot afford to lose that. It's in there already, we're paying it. So you voted at the meeting, at the budget hearing, 7.9. Keep it at 7.9. If anybody there during an election's gonna come down and fight to decrease it to 7.8, it'll be an election issue. So I hope they keep it at 7.9, because many years ago, Mayor Taylor and I were criticized for keeping the millage rate where it was or even increasing it, and we took, we bit the bullet. But at least keep it at 7.9. Stand up for the citizen, because in another situation, I look at the library, $2.56 million to have an institution like that where they're underfunded with buying books. For many years, they kept it or decreased it. I think they kept it at a level, you have a, we're a first-class city, let's have a first-class library. As far as the public's works, works goes, I know a lot of the people in public works. These people work hard, and they really work hard, and they really, over the years, in my judgment, have been short-changed on pay increases. So let's keep it at 7.9. That's a big issue right there. Public works, they go out, and I know a lot of, they're, they're just good people that work hard and just wanted to look to make, make a living. So keep again, 7.9. I keep referring to that. Parks, parks, our city thrives on parks. We have to keep the money flowing in there to keep the green, green. And as far as that goes, we need the 7.9 to keep these institutions or departments working on, on a level. As far as the golf course goes, this is a, this is a treasure, as far as I'm concerned. Of course, I'm partial because I'm on a golf board, but we have to keep this going. We're a growing city. If people want to come in, they look at this, they look at that. That's another reason to keep the millage rate at 7.9. We gotta keep that golf course in operating shape. If the, Ron is doing one hell of a job. And so, of course, I'm partial, but I'm telling it the way it is, as it is.
I'm a cot-carrying member myself of the golf course, though.
Good for you. I like that joke. I mean, Commissioner. I mean, Vice Mayor. So, again, next year, I think, with the stock market being volatile and China pulling all kinds of games, let's keep the millage rate at 7.9. And I promise you, it will be an election issue if anybody goes lower than that, because as you can see, these departments and, and these people deserve, that work for the city in different departments. As far as the police go, nowhere's hands and butts. What's happening to the police, as you know, one guy was slaughtered down in Texas. These guys, and I was a former auxiliary police officer. My wife used to worry, and let me tell you something, until I walked through that door, all I wore was a bulletproof vest and I had a nightstick. But these cops are, we gotta say prayers for them. The fire department, I want to compliment the fire department, and can't do enough for both of these uniform departments, because the fire department runs an organization that I'm proud to be part of, CERT. CERT. We had a drill with the hurricane coming on, citywide with the radios, and it was a plus. So I, I implore that the fire department and anybody out there should look into, go to the Fire Station 5, get an application, and join CERT. That's about it.
Thank you.
Remember, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, 7.9. Thank you.
I think you made that pretty clear. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think it needed to be stated for the record, for the public. I'm just saying, once we set a millage rate, the millage cannot be increased, but we can come back and decrease it, but we cannot increase it. So if we go 7.9, we're gonna have to stick with 7.9. We cannot come back and say we shouldn't have made it 8, 8.2, et cetera. We have to keep it at, we can always go down from 7.9. Thank you.
Is, Commissioner? Go ahead.
Some of the comments raise a couple of points I'd just like to comment on. First of all, as far as the pensions are concerned, I'm highly in favor of a defined benefit pension system, because it helps attracting and maintain quality employees. However, it's, it's a little more difficult to keep on track than a defined contribution. You gotta, you know, look down the road for sustainability, and you have to sometimes so, show some self-restraint. And we're a little out of balance right now, so we're gonna have to make some adjustments. But over the long haul, I believe we'll have a stable defined benefit pension. Another point is about the CRA budget, and there's, you know, there's always a little grumbling that CRA money is not available for the general fund balance budget. But just like to point out, the reason that makes the CRA useful is that the money that goes into the CRA from property taxes is also matched by the county. So if we lose 7.9 mils for new construction in the CRA from the city budget, and it stays in the CRA budget, the county is also losing its increase in property millage, which works out to be about, I believe, county is right, right around four mils. So say 7.94 mils. A third of the CRA budget comes from county funds, and if we get rid of the CRA, we lose, we lose that four mils, one-third of the budget, so we would, we would not see that. And plus, we'd have to assume the CRA debt, and it's that kind of accounting, which, which means CRA is useful and needs to stay in place. And 7.9, I believe, rate is kind of the edge of the envelope to keep businesses in Boynton. If we, if we raised it too much, I think it would start, some businesses would start kind of moving on to other cities with lower property taxes. We need, we could use more revenue, but we have to work within those parameters, I think, to keep the city on a healthy course.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else from the audience would like to talk about the millage rate for the general fund? If not, we're gonna close public discussion. Closed.
I'd like to offer motion that we, the millage rate for the city of Boynton be 7.9 for the 2015, 2016 year.
Second?
All in favor?
Point of information, just like to point out that Commissioner-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Please have note that Commissioner Murcais joined us on the dais. Sure.
First, let me apologize for coming late. I have what you call a shiva call. A neighbor of mine passed away, and out of respect to their family, obviously, I wanted to be there. So I apologize for coming in late. I'll just concur that I think the status quo of the 7.9 is correct. Let's hope that this year, this new year, will be even better, and, and that's all I'll say. And thank you again for understanding.
I've had a motion and a second for the discussion.
Um, Vice Mayor?
All in favor?
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Do you have to read it?
When he's done. Go for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? It passes unanimously.
All right. Vice Mayor, that, that authorizes Resolution R 15093 to be adopted. It's a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for the city's general operating fund for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, announcing the percentage, if any, the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate, announcing the date, time, and place of the second and final budget hearing of the budget and millage rate, providing for severability conflict, and providing an effective date. Based upon the previous motion in Section 2, the millage rate for 1516 fiscal year would be 7.9%. That's 7.10%, 7.10% above the computed rollback rate of 7.3762. The second and final public hearing is announced in the resolution. If adopted, is September the 15, 2015, at 6:30 PM here in the commission chambers.
Need a motion to adopt Resolution 15093.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Resolution 15, R 15094, resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending, excuse me, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, providing for severability conflict and an effective date.
Do I have a motion-
Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, we've moved off the, we moved up from the agenda. We moved seven. 7B is now open for discussion. And get the page here. It's the proposed, approve and authorize the city manager to execute required documents for the following policies for the fiscal year 2015-2016, renewal of GOP medical and dental insurance. Discussion?
If you would like Julie to provide just a brief synopsis on it, we certainly can.
Can I ask one question? Did we go, did we do the health insurance?
That's what this item is.
You're doing dental first, though. You have both.
Both. They're both separate resolutions.
Okay, you're doing, okay. I have the health first. That's right.
Just to bring Commissioner Murka up to speed, this was item 7B on the agenda. It was moved up.
Oh, okay.
Because the insurance costs are an integral part of the budget, so it made more sense to discuss it now, following the adoption of the millage in budget.
Thank you.
Just before Julie starts, I'd like to interject. I'm glad it's getting out now so that the public will know what is going on because a lot of employees, they are disgruntled. I'm just saying unhappy, I would use that word, because I don't think they was really given the full aspect of how the insurance atmosphere is going to work. I'm just saying, it affects all of us. I'm just saying, we're commissioners, we're under that, we have to pay the same as you all, so we're not slighted. So I just want that to be for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Julie Oldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. The item before you is to approve the employee group medical and dental plans for fiscal year 1516. We're recommending renewing our dental insurance with our current plan with Cigna. This plan has a 5% increase in premiums. And for the medical plan, we're recommending moving to one plan option to offering a high deductible health plan, which would be through our current provider, Cigna. And this plan actually has a reduction in premiums of 8.58%. One of the benefits of this plan is the ability for employees to have a health savings account. That's a feature. It's an IRS provision to allow them to save money in a tax-deferred account. And I know in the budget, you saw that there was an increase in 15% in insurance costs, and that's to support the city being able to invest some funding to offset the deductible and the high deductible plan. So that is what we have proposed for you tonight.
Julie, stop right there. What they need to hear is that, I'm just saying, if a family plan is like $5,000, you need to kind of go in depth and tell them how much that family will have to pay so it sounds better to them. We understand, but they haven't heard it.
All the employees, they have heard it because we've had informational meetings.
Stop, stop.
Sure.
Obviously, the employees have heard it. We have people that are sitting out here who are citizens.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Who have not heard it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so how the high deductible plan works is that for employee-only coverage, first you pay the deductible. And so that's a $2,500 deductible for employee coverage. For coverage for people who have dependents or families, the deductible is 5,000. So you are actually, instead of paying copayments when you go to the doctors and things that people are more maybe accustomed to hearing, you are paying the contracted rate with Cigna for those services. And then after you meet that deductible for your in-network covered services, there are no additional charges. It's just for copayments for prescriptions.
Are the city putting funds in? This is what?
And the city is offering the health savings account, yes.
Okay.
And the city is working with the different, negotiating with the unions right now for the amount of funding that will go into the health savings account for their members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, by going despite this high deductible plan, how much is that actually saving the
The premiums went down, Tim Howard, Director of Finance, 8% that the city is going to pay. What is still being determined is the amount that the city is going to invest into the HSA accounts across the board with all of the various unions plus the nonrepresented.
Okay.
Right now, we're assuming and we're planning on the 15% increase that we put in the budget to utilize that for the first year to jumpstart this program. The split of that, I'm not sure, we don't know what that is yet.
Okay, putting aside what, to give back to the employees' accounts, what is the round number just by going to the high deductible? Was it?
Or the?
The savings to the city?
8%. 1.2 million citywide. That includes more than general.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, that's all right. I'd like to comment regarding the health insurance. Yours truly is in that field of endeavor. I am not a lover of this plan that's being presented. Unfortunately, for all people, not just people who work in the city, health insurance, especially next year, could be very frightening, the cost and the benefits. I will be going along with this, but what I do recommend very highly is that we start out as early as possible. Next year's results could be mind-boggling. If you think your costs have gone up over the past couple of years, next year, unfortunately, and I hope I'm wrong, could be even worse. You talk about a high deductible saving the city money. Well, maybe I'm not a good commissioner, but that's not my concern. My concern, the most important, as I experienced this evening with a 70, 71-year-old man who passed away, the most important thing any of us have is our health. And to me, when people look for saving money with their health plan, their disability insurance, with their long-term care insurance, I say simply to the point, shame on you. I personally, Julie, next year, hope that, as I'm repeating, we start earlier, because to have higher and higher deductibles, though it sounds wonderful, we're saving money. We're not saving money. We're hurting people. God forbid, something happens to them or their family.
I believe we've made the motion. We had a second on proposed Resolution Number R 15-104, approve and authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Cigna Healthcare for the city's group medical insurance for the plan year October 1, 2015, through September 30, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we have a motion of, was that the motion?
There was already a motion on the floor. All opposed? Passes unanimously.
Just before we get away from the insurance, we need to be stated that we have been looking at clinics like for employees. We need to let them know that we have not taken that off the table. I'm just saying, we're still looking at ways for saving.
Okay.
Thank you.
The second part of this is the proposed Resolution Number R 15-105, approve and authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Cigna Healthcare for the city's fully insured dental plan for the plan year October 1, 2015, through September 30, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, get back to the regular schedule of the agenda. Announcements, community and special events presentations, and I believe we have by Wally Majors, announcement by Recreation Parks Director, Wally Majors.
Informational items.
Informational, informational, informational items.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Still working up here. Informational items by the members of the city commission. City, we'll get you up there. But this is the city commission right here.
Not public audience. After Julie spoke, the table wasn't open for people to discuss the healthcare.
Right.
Can I ask why that is?
Because I mis-
Okay.
Overwrote it.
But you've already passed. You've already made the motion pass.
Would you like to say something? We'll hear you all.
Okay. My name's Gail Moots. I live at 8524 Michael Drive in Boynton Beach. First off, thank you. I appreciate all the hard work you do for the community and the employees. Without knowing the actual money that the city is going to give to the HSA plans or the accounts for the employees, I need to use the number $75, because that was the initial amount that was told to us. Okay? So in that $75 that they want to put into the HSA plan for the employees, that's $900 a year, or $701,000, $900 a month, pardon me, $900 a year, or $701,000 total for all the 779 employees that have health insurance. So in saying that, my question is, can the premium that is currently proposed of an increase of $5.01, because if I have the numbers correct according to what was on the internet, last year's HDHP plan was $658.94 per employee. This year, a proposed amount is $663.95. That's an increase of $5.01 a month. Now, with that $5 increase came a 15, the deductible for one person went from $1,000 to $2,500 on a $5 increase in the premium. I know that when I get auto insurance, I'm going to pay that higher premium to get a lower deductible. So if we take, or if you consider, that $75 that you're assisting the employees with, increasing the premium, which makes it the, increasing, yes, increasing the premium, which makes it now an official high deductible, high premium plan, will that lower the, I said that wrong, higher?
But you're sounding good. Keep going.
I know. It sounded good, didn't it? I'm on a roll. If we increase the premium by the $75, will that lower the deductible of the plan?
Julie Oldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. No, it will not.
Okay.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
You want more?
Yes, I would love to hear more, yeah.
The premium on the high deductible plan for the seven employees who had that plan did go up by, like you said, about the $5. The difference is in the plan design for that program has changed. Where you had the $1,500 deductible, where that has gone up to $2,500, what has come off that is the 20% co-insurance.
Okay.
So that makes a significant difference. The other thing that it's hard to do, like an apples-to-apples comparison there, because when we have the PPO plan paired up with the high deductible plan, and even when we tried to pair up our current PPO plan with this high deductible plan, that still resulted in an 18 and a half, almost 19% increase just to keep the existing PPO plan. So that's where we have the discrepancy. But at last year, when we offered the high deductible to begin with as an option, we had seven people. So the plan that, you know, when we were going out and educating everybody, we really were speaking to the other, you know, the majority of the people who did not partake in, you know, 700 people on the plan who didn't, you know, exercise the option to move to the high deductible at this point.
Okay. I just have a couple more questions if I can. There's talk about a clinic scheduled to open in October of 2016. How will this affect our health plan benefits? And will our premiums and deductibles be lowered for the next fiscal year? Or are we locked into another couple of years with this high deductible, high premium plan?
Opening the clinic, first of all, we're going to go out for an RFP. It's on my radar to do that in this fiscal year and early in the first quarter. As far as the impact that would have on our premiums for this year, zero, because we don't have it. And for any negotiating power with the insurance companies for next year, it's not going to happen either, because it's going to all be based on our claims experience. The idea is, you know, in trying to contain the costs that are escalating for the insurance plans and shifting to this model where it's lowered the premium overall for the city, is to help, hope that we can have some funding and capital to be available to actually fund that clinic and get that operational, so that once we have that and begin to utilize it, then we will begin to see a change, hopefully, in our premiums.
Hopefully.
Right. I mean, and it's always hopefully. There's, you know...
Unfortunately, can I just cut in and be, I'm on your side.
May I just point out, you know, and this is a one-year plan. Each year, we're either bidding it out, or it expires and you start over again.
Right. That was my, it's every year that way.
Better? Right. It's every year. We've been doing it every year for years. Every single year, we look at it. And, you know, we can't do it much sooner, as Commissioner Murka asked, because it's based on claims history, which I think the providers are hard-pressed to quote us prices on insurance premiums when they don't have a good eight to 10 months of claims experience to judge our, to determine how they're going to set our premiums. Our claims are huge for the city, and that's why our rates are going through the roof. So this is an attempt to try to, this year, we're really not going to be saving a whole lot of money, because we're going to try to, which is still being, you know, discussed is how much. That's why we haven't told you. We know minimum 75, but we're working with the unions. We need to get some things squared away before I can make that final call on what that number is for the employee population. But, you know, we hope by doing this this year that it helps employees start to fund an HSA account. And then, you know, the employee's going, the responsibility is going to shift to the employee to fund a portion of that account as well. And that account is under their ownership and stays with them for the future. And you hope to build it, so as those deductibles come up each year, you've got money in there to pay them. So, you know, the clinic is something we absolutely want to do. It's a matter of what it's going to cost to get it open. And then, you know, there's different models. Took West Palm several years. They're up and running, and it's, they're seeing the benefits now of their insurance premiums and their healthcare costs, as to, you know, encourage employees to utilize a clinic for basic, I have a cold, I have a fever, I sprained my wrist, and they're not going to emergency rooms and so forth. That takes your claim cost down, which ultimately, so you need to build a little history for then us to see a benefit in our premiums. But hopefully, you know, we don't know what it will be, if it'll be a minimum copay or free to go to the clinic for the employee to get that basic healthcare. You know, and it's all, it's still subject to RFP and commission consideration and budgeting for next year. But we've identified a site and we're making improvements to be ready for it now.
Do you have any further questions?
Yes, I have one more. I guess I just need outright ask it. Why were the city of Boynton Beach employees not afforded the opportunity to pay the difference of the new premium?
That's always up for consideration.
Okay. Just a question.
Okay.
Mr. Murka, you have the last word.
Very good point. Your last point is excellent. Julie and everybody else has been trying their, pardon my language, damnedest, to give the best policy available. The problem is, it's not the city, it's not the city's fault.
Correct.
The problem is very simply, it's the insurance company and the control which is not there over insurance companies. So what Julie and what Lori is saying with their fingers crossed, that they're hoping that the cost won't go up. And I, if I was an employee or even myself, the way you should think automatically, don't even think that costs are going to go down, as this is a health savings plan, even if you're not in a health savings plan, and thank God you're healthy, happy, and wise, you should be putting money away, because healthcare in this country is not going to go down. And so, as you said very wisely and asked intelligently, the best way to protect yourself is simply, as your mother and father taught you, save money, because healthcare is not going down.
Thank you, Mr. Murka. Okay, we're on to informational items by the members of the city.
Everything's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your input. Informational items by the members of the city commission, and we'll start with Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to say that I made it to our sewer board meeting. And I just want to say, I was happy to see Commissioner Fitzpatrick as the chair. Reminded me when I was the chair and everything. I'm just saying, I had time that I could rush down there, and it was a very well-run meeting. Thank you, Colin, for your assistance. Everything went well. I'd like to say to our police department, as I look around the audience tonight, I'm glad to see, you know, we have higher-ups watching what we do, so that you can go back and tell those that you're working with, you know, what is going on within the city. You're hearing it firsthand. Also, I'd like to draw the point that we all need to be aware of now, and that is that... Also, I'd like to draw the point that we all need to be aware of now, and that is that with the cemetery of Boynton, we have no more burial spaces, okay? But what we need to start doing is we are in the process, Mr. Livergood and the city manager, they are replotting the cemetery. So if you have a loved one who passes and you have to bury them someplace else, you can't exhume that individual and bring them back once we get it plotted and bury them in our city cemetery, that is the wish of the family. So we need to let them know, just because you have to bury them someplace else, the law states in the state of Florida that you can't take them up and bring them back. So until we get it straightened out, you know, they don't have to stay where you put them, you can always bring them back, that's all I need to tell you.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Okay, it's hard to top that. August 20th, I attended the Greenways, Blueways, and Trails Public Workshop in the library. August 26th, I attended a Save the Historic High School meeting. September 1st, I attended the South Central Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Board meeting. And then on September 2nd, I was down at Veterans Park for the 70, it was for three reasons. It was the 70th anniversary of the victory over Japan. They used it to unveil a new Purple Heart monument. And thirdly, the French Legion of Honor was awarded to eight World War II veterans. And the French Leagueate took his time to mention and thank to three Americans who stopped a terrorist attack on a passenger train and pointed out they got the same Legion of Honor Medal, and it was well-received. Thank you.
I attended the Greenway/Blueway Symposium, it was great, it learned a lot. And we've got some great plans here, long-term for the City of Boynton as far as our greenways and blueways and bike trails. So it's something to look forward to. Please note that Mr. Merka has left the desk. Okay, we have an announcement by Recreation Parks Director Wally Majors regarding a Nickelodeon Worldwide Day of Play event, which will be held at Barrier Free Park on Saturday, September 12, 2015, from 12 to, 10 to 12 noon.
Wally Majors, Recreation and Parks Director, Vice Mayor, you took my thunder and thank you very much.
No, I just want to again reiterate that this is part of our Play Outdoors Unplugged series. These events are again reflective of the city's strategic plan whereby we want to do everything we can to make Boynton a fun and family-oriented community. This event again is going to feature Nickelodeon-related themes whereby SpongeBob is going to be at the park along with Hello Kitty. We're going to have SpongeBob-related competitions, the Kids Fun Expo, live entertainment by the group called Shine. And for the first 400 kids, we're going to have Krabby Patties. So for those of you who know what Krabby Patties are, we look forward to seeing you at the event.
Benvenidos.
Thank you very much.
From Benvenidos.
Okay, very good.
I've got a couple of proclamations to read down here. The first one is the Sickle Cell Awareness Month. If Mr. Glover is in the audience, if he joined me down here at the podium?
They're right there.
Whereas sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder causing medical problems, including clogged blood vessels, ammonia, pain, organ damage that affects an estimated 100,000 people in the U.S. and millions globally. And whereas sickle cell disease occurs in one out of every 500 African-American birth and one out of every 36,000 Hispanic-American births, the sickle cell trait occurs in approximately one in 12 African-Americans and is the most commonly inherited blood disorder in the United States. Whereas no cure for sickle cell disease exists today, however, quality disease, management, treatment, options, and preventive services can alleviate suffering and death. Public information, education, screening, and counseling are needed to allow those affected to properly manage their lives. The Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County is the only entity in Palm Beach County that is dedicated to servicing persons affected by sickle cell. Now therefore, I standing in for Jerry Taylor by virtue and authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida hereby proclaim September 2015 as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. In Boynton Beach, and urge all citizens to join in reaffirming a commitment to reduce the burden of illness, disability, and premature death imposed by this disease. And witness hereof, I have here set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida the third day of September 2015. Sir? Thank you. The second one I have is proclaim, whereas the National Prepariness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Boynton Beach to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural, man-made disasters. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Ready Campaign, Citizens Corp., and other federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of the City of Boynton Beach, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a prior priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of Boynton Beach are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and ask to visit the websites of Ready Campaign at ready.gov or listo.gov in Spanish and become more prepared. Now therefore, I standing in for Jerry Taylor, Mayor of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2015 as National Prepariness Month and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together, creating a more prepared society. And witness hereof, I here do set my hand on this third day of September in the year 2015, and I believe, Karice, you will accept this.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, want to say a few words?
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to remind all the citizens, which I know everybody's very well aware, we are in hurricane season and we had a little trial run here last weekend with Tropical Storm Erica. It was a great exercise for city staff as we geared up for a category-one landfall, which we thought it might be. But in the meantime, as the Vice Mayor had stated, it's very important that all the citizens take care to prepare for themselves. You must have a plan. In hurricane season, if we don't get hit by a hurricane, we do have severe rain events and floods are one of the most common hazards in the United States. We ask that you take some precautions, remember to turn around and don't drown, avoid walking or driving through floodwaters, just six inches of moving water can knock you down and two feet of water can sweep away your vehicle. So I would like everyone to follow us on Twitter, Facebook, and go to the city website for current information, also for watches and warnings during tropical storm activity. And be sure to go to www.redy.gov to learn how to create your own home and family emergency plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Karice. And I don't know who was more excited, you, Karice, or the weatherman with this last storm alert. At this time, we'll open up the floor to public audience. Anybody wishing to speak anything that it's not on the agenda, please come up to one of the podiums. You'll have three minutes to discuss whatever you need to discuss. Give your name and address.
Evening, Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. Just a couple of very brief comments this evening. August ended a solid, ended very solidly and on par with 2014. We definitely had a strong summer overall and had increases across most revenue lines. With the start of the school year, it brings our regular programming and a couple of new things, including art infusion for the six to nine-year-olds, where they will learn about some of the great artists, including Jackson Pollock, Botero, and others, and create a work of art in the style of the artist. Fun Fridays return this fall, the first taking place on September 18th, with two naturalists visiting the museum talking about birds of prey. Accompanying them will be a live bird of prey where the children can get up close and personal. Another special day is next Tuesday, September 8th. The Schoolhouse will mark 102 years of teaching children. We are very proud to be a part of this milestone and will create, excuse me, will celebrate with a special storytime and craft for the children and cupcakes for museum visitors. So we hope to see you next Tuesday. Thank you.
How you doing? Good evening, everyone. My name is John Bridwell, I'm the General Manager for the Carolina House here in Boynton Beach, located on the northwest corner of Boynton and Congress. I just wanted to announce that on Friday, September 11th, we're going to be hosting an event to honor our local police, fire, rescue, and paramedics. From 3:00 to 6:00, we're going to be providing a free buffet, just to say thank you to all of our local heroes and to say thank you for everything that you do for our community. Again, that's going to be on Friday, September 11th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Herb Saw, 1711 Wood Fern, Boynton Beach. On November the 7th, the Sierra Club are going to honor the Green Commissioner Fitzpatrick, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. I'll be away, too bad, I was invited, I won't be there, but it's a good thing for the Green Commissioner. I was at a CAC meeting on Monday. County Commissioner Burdick was there, a lot of dignitaries from the South Water Management Company and other dignitaries, it was a good, a good meeting. I want to say that at the end of the meeting, we got around and we spoke. On climate change, on climate change, we, most of us agreed, we are beyond, we've reached the tipping point. In other words, there's no going back. It can, it's going to get worse, but it is what it is. Water is disappearing. Aquifers all over the country and all over the world are disappearing. The aquifers are irreplaceable, the water cannot be replaced, that's period. Again, drinking water is very important, as we all know. And another thing, I said earlier, that the slaughter of a police officer, sheriff in Texas, and others that are being shot down, we need the police, we have to support the police. I would like to take the rest of the time and have the audience, if the commissioners agree, to say a prayer for those that have been shot, slaughtered, and to say prayers for all police all over the country, if that's okay with you, Vice Mayor.
You lead it? Sure.
Well, no, I, I, I just want everybody, a silence.
A moment of silence?
Thank you very much. One other thing I want to bring, join CERT. CERT is a part of the Fire Department. During hurricanes, we're fully trained to be the eyes and ears of the city, and we need more participation. You go to the fire station, put up application, later in the year, you're trained and given all the equipment that you need. We need more people from CERT. We have to get out there and help. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor, before we move on. Thank you. I need Chief, I need you to come down because I have a question for you because it's a concern to me now. I heard what Mr. Suss said, and I agree with him 100% with all, everything that's happening in the world. What is the morale of our police department now?
Jeff Katz, Police Chief. I would say that it's definitely on an uptick. It's, you know, it's difficult to measure, there is no universal measure for morale, but I would say that over the course of the last six months, since the ratification of the contract, the purchase of some new cars, the restructuring of the organization, it's definitely on the uptick.
Stop, stop. I know that's good. I'm talking about with the killings, I'm saying, how are they accepting this? This is my, I know the morale is up, I'm just saying with all, that we are doing for them. I'm talking about the morale now, I'm just saying, when they hear about, you know, an officer slain, a sheriff slain, you know, and it bothers me, and I'm just, because I sit up and bid, I'm saying, oh my God, another one.
Well, sir, it's definitely concerning for our members, as it is every police officer in the United States. It seems as though the community is somewhat polarized right now between people that are for and against police. But, you know, our officers are keeping their heads up high and they're out there doing their jobs and they're being professional.
Thank you. I'm going to speak for this commission, you can go back and let them know that we support them 100% and we thank them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to administrative, seeing no new applicants for city advisory boards, we'll move on to the 6I that was pulled from the consent agenda by Commissioner Fitzpatrick. Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Well, I'd just like to say, I'm pleased with the successes of the city's lobbyists this year, but a constituent asked me to pull this to get some more information, so that's why I did it. And we have our lobbyist here in the audience, Matt Forrest, so he can answer some questions if needed.
John McGovern.
Matt, would you like to get on the other podium over there and answer his questions? Please give your name and your position.
Good evening, I'm Matt Forrest with Ballard Partners, registered lobbyist for the City of Boynton Beach.
John McGovern, 3929 Palladium Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, 33436. I'm living off of a comment I made at the last meeting. I sent a rather long email to the commission earlier in the week, and first of all, I'm wondering, can that email be entered into the record because an electronic copy was already sent to the clerk, so I don't have to repeat?
Sure.
Thank you. I am hoping that this net increase, which it is, it's almost a 33% increase in the requested rate on this contract, results in great things for this city. My real question at the last meeting was to ask through the city manager for some examples of Ballard's excellence in returns for whomever they would rate their biggest achievements. And I ask this because at this time last year, in the third quarter, a total of $90 million flowed into the coffers of the state lobbyists, and 20% of that went to the four ranked the highest, one of whom is Ballard. That was $18 million divided by that, those four. So those numbers astound me. $90 million in one quarter, and it makes sense that the third quarter would be the heavy hit because it's this time of year when folks like us are renewing these contracts. But when I look at the reporting periods, I don't see, for Ballard Partners especially, I don't see large enumerations of where those dollars are going, with the sole exception of the $10,000 item I cited in my email. And I don't see a lot of money benefiting Palm Beach County. So for our net increase, and God knows how many municipalities in Palm Beach are paying the same rate, I want to see more returns to Palm Beach County, and that's why I asked for stellar examples of what Ballard is doing for tax, return on taxpayer dollars. for stellar examples of what Ballard is doing for return on taxpayer dollars going to Tallahassee, basically.
Forrest?
More than happy to answer. Well, first of all, always let me point out, too, that as much as everybody says, what does the lobbyist get, we're part of a team. I'm always as good as the clients I get to work with. So I might be the advocate in Tallahassee for the city of Boynton Beach. I'm taking forward an agenda and items put together by the city of Boynton Beach along with me. With all humility, I will say I'm a valuable part of that process, but without working with the staff, without working with your commissioners, without working with many of the department heads, putting together the project, putting together the issues, and also keeping them updated on what the issues are, as they obviously are a very fluid place in Tallahassee, we can't be successful. With all that said, tremendous return on investment for the city of Boynton Beach this year. Just alone this year, we brought home, the team, not just myself, a $300,000 water project and $140,000 for Women's Club, which would have been actually even more than that if we would have survived the veto pen from the governor. So the return on investment is one of the easiest things to generate from the public side of things. In addition, again, I won't go through the entire firm, we have many clients, but I can tell you, just locally, we also represent the city of Palm Beach Gardens, they also have a water project in the budget, we represent the city of Boca Raton, they have a beach project in the budget, we represent the Broward Sheriff's Office, they also had money allocated in the budget. So there are several government entities that we represent that have allocations in the state budget. Again, I can't take sole credit, I wouldn't be the one to say I put them in the budget. At the end of the day, we're only advocates. We can get up to Tallahassee and speak as loud as we possibly can, as often as we can, for the projects that come forward from the local governments. But in the contrast that I think you pointed out, in terms of for-profit clients versus nonprofit clients, which is what the city government is, the budget is probably the greatest place to look at return on investment. There's not a lot, I wouldn't say any, but that's where the nonprofits generate their return on investment most considerably, is when you look at just the allocations in a budget. You're not going to find a lot of for-profit companies with line items in the budget. That answer your question?
Well, not really, because I would be concerned about, even beyond Palm Beach County. I mean, I have read what the governor vetoed, and I also read what he signed, and I was quite pleased that, for example, the city of Lake Worth got $3.5 million for an economic development project, and I would love to see something like that come home to Boynton Beach, especially as we are really talking up economic development.
We put together the package, we're more than happy to advocate for it. I do think that project was vetoed, though, also.
No.
Lake Worth?
It was funded.
That one was?
It was one of the 166 million that was approved. Not in the 350 million that were vetoed. So I hope that not hundreds of thousands, but millions will be worked our way, I think it's our turn, and in light of what we know goes on here regarding economic development, I'm hoping we can massage that to the hilt and bring in a multimillion-dollar grant from member items. Thank you.
Let me just jump in and make a comment. I'm just saying, I remember when I would go to Tallahassee Day with former city manager Kurt Bresner, and I've worked with you all, and it was, when we was up there for Tallahassee Day, we met with the representatives, and this is where a lot of lobbying is done, you meet with your state elected officials and let them know what you want and how you want to get it, and go from door to door, and bang on doors, and money was flourishing when we was up there prior. Money has been tight. We only had one disagreement, that was, I think, when you jumped on some board, and I said, why did you do that? But other than that, you know, you and I, we have always seen eye to eye, and I think that you're doing a fantastic job. But I'm just saying, when we go up from the city of Boynton to represent the city of Boynton and Tallahassee, we need to go and lobby our elected officials, this is how we get things done. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I'm a Democrat, I would prefer the money, lobbyist money, go to a Democrat lobbying firm, it's going to a Republican lobbying firm, but the reality is, Tallahassee is controlled by the Republicans, and I believe the three south counties are generally Democrat, and our delegations are really getting shut out of having much say up there. And I believe the rest of the state, in Tallahassee, uses the three southern counties as cash cows, and I agree, we're not getting our fair share back, but that's, we're not making, we five up here are not making the rules, or we can't really have much influence on that, so this is the best we can do.
I pulled three reports for three reporting periods. I wasn't going to bring that up, but it's a point that is very important. First of all, Palm Beach County, again, is almost entirely missing from donations, or I should say, gifts to politicians, which, again, are our dollars, and...
Actually, so those are not?
I see nothing...
Contributions come from individual organizations. City of Boynton Beach money does not go to contributions to elected officials.
So when your firm gives a $3,000 gift...
You have to say, does Ballard Partners, or does a client of Ballard Partners make a contribution?
No, it's Ballard Partners, several times a year gives $2,500 a clip to the governor as Ballard Partners, and I find that upsetting. Upsetting is a mild verb, but unless we are helping our delegation with political funds, we have low expectations for them to bring home the so-called, well, in other states it's called bacon, here it's called turkey. I don't see our delegation represented at all in the Ballard Partners list.
We, as a firm, I would say, don't write a lot of individual firm checks, period, to elected officials. I can tell you, I have several clients, though, that write contribution and support the local delegation, and I'm sure if the local delegation members were here, they would tell you that, you know, that they're happy with the support they receive from clients that have their interests at heart.
So when I see $2,500 from Ballard Partners to Governor Rick Scott's reelection campaign, that's not any Boynton Beach money admixed in there?
I guess, at the end of the day, if you're contributing to the firm, that there is some pennies involved from Boynton Beach that could be allocated to that, yes.
Okay, and that happens almost quarterly.
I'd just say something. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, there's good points taken by you, there's good points taken by you. I think this is, will be our second year with you.
Maybe more, actually.
No, but of this last contract, second or third is it?
Oh, on the contract, yeah.
We're on the third year.
A third, I'm sorry. I think at the end of three years is a good time to evaluate. I think Ballard has taken the effort positively to help us in every way they could. As far as what a company, and I'm going to use the word company, business company, does to gain for its clients in the field of lobbying, I think this is normal. I don't care if you're, and I happen to be a registered Democrat.
For the record, I'm actually non-party affiliated. I mean, the firm is even not, Brian Ballard is a registered Republican, but we have, there's other Democrats that work in the firm also.
I'm sorry, but all I'm saying is that I applaud you this past year.
Thanks.
That's really what I'm saying. I apologize. And let's move forward, let's see what you can do this year, and then reevaluate.
The executive branch of government has 18 subdivisions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
And that's down from, in the 20s, a couple of years ago. I would, my second hope is that we can spread our influence as widely as possible among those 18 subdivisions, because of, again, our interest in economic development.
You know, let me just jump in and make a final point, and I'd just like to say to you, you and your firm, you know, I applaud you all, you did give the governor $2,500, because he had that pen in his hand saying, veto, we got some money, you know, I don't see anything wrong with it. You're paid, you get.
I'd just like to weigh in real quickly here and simplify this. We paid Ballard Partners, I believe, $50,000.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand dollars, they brought in, back to the city of Boynton Beach, over $400,000. Now, if you do the ratio dollar thing, that's a win-win, in my opinion.
Excuse me, but the new contract...
Excuse me, because I'm finishing talking here. The other thing is that, you know, the state house is built of all Republicans, there's only like 31 Democrats out of the 140 state reps up there somewhere. If anybody's seen this gentleman work, the halls, and the respect that Ballard Partners has in Tallahassee, I can tell you, it's unsurpassed. They are, they are probably one of the number one. So we're glad, I'm glad he's on our team.
But the new contract is 60 times two, it's a two-year contract, and it's 60 per year. So I'm looking at $120,000, up from a one year of $45,000.
And the year prior was 50, so we started 50, went down to 45, I was able to beat them up a little more successfully, and now they want us to get back up to where some of our colleagues are.
And by comparison, it pairs you up with your neighbors. It's the same rate that Lantana pays Palm Beach Gardens, and so it's kind of our going rate for local governments. We gave you guys a deal about a year ago, because we felt like we hadn't brought something home in a while, and so we went to the bat for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern, thank you, Matt.
Motion, Jim, you going to move?
Yeah, I'll do, you want a second, or either way, Matt?
Got a motion on the floor to accept?
Accept.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, passes. Hey, that's going to put us over to bids and purchases over $100,000, 7A. Approve a purchase ought to be issued by a cut above landscaping irrigation company in the amount of $121,899.65 for landscape improvements to 14. Congress Avenue mediums improvements are being made based upon recent designs by Kim Lee Horn.
I'd like to make comments.
Do we get a motion? Motion first, I would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Second. Second, now it's open for discussion.
Thank you. The comments I'd like to make is, they're really positive, I'm just saying, you know, for Congress Avenue and the mediums, I've been out there, and they are improving. We are improving on federal highway, so I'm not trying to be partial, but I'm just saying, we have to pay to make our city look beautiful, and that's the only thing I want to say, is that, you know, I don't levy anybody for, you know, putting money on Congress Avenue, on federal highway, I'm just saying, you know, mediums are things that we got to make sure are up to snuff, and they haven't been up to snuff. Ready to vote?
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, it's been second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, passes unanimously. We'll go down to 7C, we had moved 7B. 7C, proposed resolution number R15106, authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Lane Heavy Civil Incorporated for the raw water main, section C project, bid number 049-2821-15KTR, in the amount of $5,620...
Five million.
Five million.
Five hundred. I crossed that.
I wish it was five million.
You're getting a deal here. Five million, six...
Five hundred.
No.
No.
Five million.
Five million, 621,604.80 plus a 10% contingency fund, $562,160 if needed, or staff approval of change orders for unseen conditions, for a total expenditure of $6,183,764.80. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have a discussion?
Discussion, yes.
areas.
Discussion, Commissioner McCray?
First of all, I'd like to say to Mr. McGovern, I'm just saying, that's that pie chart that we was talking about, it just went down by $6 million, but I'd like for Colin to explain to the public what we're doing for this amount of money.
Colin Groff, Utility Director.
Colin, Colin.
That's okay, don't worry about it, I'm good with both.
He's been called worse.
I have been called worse. Anyways, this is the third segment of a pipeline that is being constructed to come from the west part of our service area to the east part, to deliver raw water to the east wastewater treatment plant, not wastewater. We got a lot of projects, anyways. This is the third part of the project. The purpose of the project is, is we are reducing our dependence on our wells in the east part of the city to protect against saltwater intrusion, and we have to have the water at the plant, so we're moving water from the west grid to the east grid. This project is a fairly large project, it's open cut along Woolbright Road, meaning there's going to be ditches in a lane in Woolbright Road, and then there's what we call directional drills under the canal, railroad track, and I-95. So a fairly large project with 36-inch pipe, and it's scheduled to start here soon, and it will be finished next year sometime, delivering water to a new plant that is also under construction. Any questions?
I just have a comment. My understanding, when it goes under I-95, you're going to be down like 40 feet below the road?
Probably deeper than that.
Fascinating staging and process to watch, though.
We are going to do a couple of tours while we're doing some interesting things with drilling that big pipe. It's really actually interesting, even for non-engineers. For engineers, it's like great, it's like heaven to watch them drill pipes, but for non-engineers, it's pretty cool, so...
It is. We'll let you know when you...
Yeah, we're going to have a party when it comes up out of the ground, and you can watch it come out right where it's supposed to.
Any further discussion? There's a motion, it's been a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against, passes unanimously. Yes. Okay, we're under the public hearing, we've got 9A. You want to read that?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 15023, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, pending the land development regulations, chapter one, general administration, article six, concurrency management, section one E, long-range capacity planning, chapter two, land development process, article two, section two B, section two D, and section two F. Chapter three, zoning, article three, section five, mixed-use urban districts, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
We have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, passes unanimously.
Roll call.
Roll call, that's right. Roll call, please, city clerk?
No. No, they don't need one.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cassell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes. It's coming back for second reading, so Hannah will have a chance to shorten up her presentation next time.
She looked disappointed when you got to speak. Okay, under the city manager's report, A, we got presentation concerning the preliminary feasibility study concerning the potential acquisition of the utility services of Town of Malapen.
Colin Groff, Utility Director. We wanted to get you up to date on some work that we've been working, doing with the Town of Malapen. We presented this presentation last week to the town commission, and they've given their staff some direction, and we're here tonight to give you the presentation and to receive some direction from you as a commission on this issue. The Town of Malapen approached us last year, early last year, beginning, end of 2013, with a letter requesting that if the city would be interested in acquiring their utility system. Again, their utility system is comprised of the Town of Malapen, and also about two-thirds, a little over two-thirds of the Town of Hypolexo, or City of Hypolexo, I don't know if it's Town or City, I think it's Town of Hypolexo. Town of Hypolexo. So both parties agreed to co-fund a high-level study to look at the feasibility of the acquisition. The study was completed in May, and they're, basically, this is a very high preliminary, high-level study, and more additional work would need to be done before we decide, before we move to a potential sale. The high-level findings that we found in the study was, basically, the merger between the two utilities is very feasible, and it's practical with benefits to both sides, which is important for a deal, both sides need to have a winning conclusion. There are some benefits to the Town of Malapen, some risk avoidance and things like that, and there, the big thing that we found is, is the acquisition would not impact current customers with city of Boynton Beach, and that's key. We cannot recommend anything moving forward if it has any impact to the current citizens and customers of the city of Boynton Beach. But based on the high-level information, the acquisition is financially feasible for both cities. I'll just go through this real quick, they have a water system, there's a current connection with the water system, we would propose two more. The wastewater system's in fairly good shape, it's small, it needs a couple of minor upgrades to meet city standards, and we would eventually change out all the meters to our side. Those are important things to understand, because those are part of the calculation on the cost of the acquisition. I'm going to skip that slide real quick. So let's just go real quick, and I won't cover this in too much depth, but this is the financial analysis, looking at it from the Town of Malapen's look. Basically, their book value, based on their most current financial audit, is about eight points, it's actually about 8.2 million, we raised that to 8.2. We raised that to eight point six because there is some valuation differences from the time we started looking at this to the time we would potentially close on the deal. So, we start off with an estimated book value of eight point six. They currently have an estimated debt of about four point four million that they're paying on. They have capital improvements planned in the next five years of about four point seven five million. They have cash on hand, which is important part of the calculation on the value of the utility, of about two million based on the last audit. That varies every month, of course, just like our utility, just like Boynton Beach's utility. There is an accounts receivable and an unbilled, a services dollar amount, which is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Basically, what that is, is from the time we agree to do an acquisition, and we agree on the closing documents to the time we close, there's water sold and water billed that they will be doing, and they have, they get that money back because it is, they were providing the services. And so, what you do is you add all those up and subtract those numbers, and you come up with a difference, and the difference in that is about two million dollars. So, that would be the potential purchase price that the city of Boynton Beach would pay for the town of Malapen's utility service area and all their infrastructure and customers. The bottom line is just what the town of Malapen would wind up with at the end. That's not important for y'all. It's important for them. They would wind up with about four point five million in cash. Now, that is something to remember, because as we go on, I'll, I'll tell you some of the direction that the town of Malapen asked us to look at next. So, the cost of acquisition for the city of Boynton Beach, this is, this is important for y'all. Basically, we take, it's the same chart that we just saw, but it's the Boynton Beach side of the, of the equation. We would assume the existing debt of the utility of four point four million. The capital improvements, we would assume of four point seven million. There'd be some interconnection costs, some transactional costs. That's just some closing costs and other costs that we have, and that's a very conservative estimate. It's probably a lot less than that, but we had the, we needed a good number. And then we add in the potential purchase price. We round that up, and then we look at, we take out four point four million, because that four point four million is already existing debt that they're already funding in their current rates. So, that's just why that comes out. But it, what it leaves basically is, is a, it's not cash value, but it's a book value that Boynton Beach would cover of seven point four million. Again, that's not real money. That's, that's paper, that's basically paper money on paper to come up with what do we need to pay to make sure this deal for the Boynton Beach citizens and community is neutral? It does not cost anybody in Boynton Beach any money. So, the next slide is really looking at, from Boynton Beach's standpoint, what would we need to do to make it financially feasible? I know the slide's probably a little small if they're hard to read, but their revenues for the utility is about two point four million a year. We estimate if we were running the utility, our expenditures would be about one point eight, three million dollars a year, leaving a difference of net revenues to the city of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, what do we use that net revenue for? That net revenue then would pay for that seven point four million dollars of paper value of that utility. And so, if you look at four percent interest over a twenty-year term, we would need five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars out of their revenue, out of the revenue of those customers to cover that cost. And you can see, we have five hundred and sixty thousand, and there's five forty-five, and that's well within the error, margin of error at this very high-level look at the finances. So, what that says is, it is financially feasible to do this deal as those numbers show, as we showed the numbers, and it's totally neutral to the current customers of city of Boynton Beach. Rate impacts to the customers, to ensure that the customers of, the current customers of Boynton Beach are not impacted, we would have to maintain the revenue that they're gaining, they're, they're receiving right now. There's a lot of ways to do that, and, and we're gonna look at those. We looked at some of those at a very high level. We cannot finish that work until we do the next step, but right now, we've looked at several, several options, but the key is, we would maintain their existing revenues to make the deal work. Now, based on the information we've looked at, Malapen is actually going to, would have to, if they had to, if they keep their utility and they fund those capital improvements, they're gonna have to raise their rates. We would not have to raise the rates to fund those, based on the financial analysis we just, I just showed you in the slide before. So, they would, we would not have to. We just have to maintain the, the same revenue stream as they're getting right now. So, so, there's three options we looked at for rates for them. One would be, we take their rates as they are right now and freeze them for about, for five years, and that would cover that differential cost. The next one we looked at is, we take the Boynton Beach rates, and we add the twenty-five, we add twenty-five percent surcharge, which actually brings in almost the same amount of money as their current rates. And the third option is basically a hybrid of coming up with a transitional rate that we would use till that debt, that seven point four million dollars is paid off, and then they would just pay normal rates because they would be covered and our, our rate plan would cover it. So, this, I'm gonna stop here. When we showed this to the town of Malapen, they ask us to go to the next step, and that's to do a, a rate distribution study. Basically, take these options that we showed, take their customer classes, split them up to how everybody pays. Some people use seven thousand gallons of water a month, some people use fifty thousand gallons of water a month, and show how these different rates affect those customers. And then they also said that, that they wanna look at an option where there would be no cash involved, that the cash would be used to lower their rates, and that's very feasible under these numbers. So, the next step for us is to, they, they, they gave their staff direction to move forward with an additional study, and, you know, so, we're here to, if, if you're interested in moving forward, we will do the next step, which is really looking at the rates, how it impacts their customers, and which is the best rate plan that gives them lower rates and protects us so we don't spend any more money. So, I'll stop there because I see some questions.
Question, yeah. What do you recommend at this point?
That we do the study for the rate distribution, because we cannot tell, the problem we have right now is, because of the level of study we did, we can't tell anybody how this acquisition would impact. I'm talking about customers of the town of Malapen. We can't tell those customers how this impacts them.
That's not my concern.
Okay.
My concern is what you recommend that's good for the city of Boynton Beach. What's good for them, of course, they're gonna favor.
Right.
I'm asking you, since this is your profession.
Right.
Which way, of the three that you said, which way do you see the safest, most secure for the city?
The most secure right now, based on the numbers we're looking at right now, is we would take their rates, and we would take the two million dollars in cash, we would not pay them, and we'd put that in a rate stabilization fund, lower their rates slightly, buy that two million, because that's their money. So, we would lower those rates because they wanna see a rate decrease. We're still neutral. It's still a good deal for the city of Boynton Beach. Either way, it's a good deal. If it, the seven point four million is the key. As long as we recover that from their, from those customers over that time period, it's a good deal for, for, for Boynton Beach.
And have you stated that this is what you are leaning towards?
Um, we will have a recommendation when we, you know, our recommendation, it's a good deal right now based on these numbers. It's even a better deal if they don't want the cash. So, it's a good deal for us now with the cash. It's a better deal if they don't want the cash.
And we can't determine that.
And we don't know that until we do the study.
The next study, which is about five thousand, six thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Each entity to, to give them some more specifics on rates.
And we're talking about a month, month and a half to do that study, and then we'll have more information.
Right. Thank you. So, what you're looking for us is to give you all, give you directions, since you call us y'all.
Sorry.
Y'all. You know, I know the southern drawl, but anyway, I'm just saying, you're a part of us as well. You know, you represent us. But my take is that you want us to give you direction, and my motion would be for you to proceed with the study and then bring back whatever's feasible for us.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I just had a couple of slides on benefits, but we don't need to go over those, because there are benefits for the city. There, there are quite a few benefits for the city. Mainly, it's expanding our customer base, which spreads our base cost over a lot more people, which, which stabilizes the rates for everybody.
Vice Mayor, you may wanna, I think, Colin, this is very important for people to understand the, the value of regionalization or getting a little bit closer in the expansion of our utility. I think if.
Yeah, I mean, I can just go over a few, because I think it is important to understand why it's beneficial to us. You know, the big thing for us is, is they have a water plant that is right in a location that would help our utility serve not only their customers, but our customers also. It's in actually a very good location for both cities to serve that northeast corner. So, there's a big benefit there. If we don't have that plant, you know, who knows? We may have to do something else up in that area. Another one is, is the biggest issue, what does for us, is it gives us more customers to spread the base cost around. We're spending about fifty million dollars on our total water project to have, for the next fifty years to have enough water supply. We started spending about five years ago, but it helps spread that cost to pay for that over more customers, which actually stabilizes rates for everybody. So, so, over time, you won't see the increases that could be there. Those are really the two biggest advantages. The other advantage for us is, right now, Hypoluxo is actually in our service area. We serve all of Hypoluxo with sewer. We serve about a third of Hypoluxo with water. The customers we don't serve with water get a sewer bill from us and a water bill from Malapen. Now, that doesn't sound like a big deal, but it is a big deal because they're, they're being served bicycle by, same house by two different utilities. Combining that and serving it with one utility is a big advantage for Boynton Beach, because it really is consolidating our utility area and actually making us a little healthier from a financial standpoint, because we're serving all of the customers in our service area. So, that's a big advantage from an operation standpoint. We just not, we don't have a customer, we're just dealing with part of what, what they, they get for our service. So, those are basically the highlights, and there's a whole bunch more. People wanna look at the presentation. There's other, the other minor benefits, but overall, and I'll just, real quick, and I know y'all wanna vote real quick, and then I'll get done. Just summary again, the current infrastructure is easily integrated into the city. There's really very little work to integrate them into the city. It's financially feasible. You know, it is in the public interest, I think, long-term, because it does help us grow the customer base, which stabilizes rates, and it, there's really, we don't see any roadblocks to it if the commission decides to move forward with this. So, with that, then.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I have a couple of questions. So, after this integration, where is the sewage from Malapen and Hypoluxo gonna go? Is it gonna end up in South Central, which we control, or does it go to east? Where's it gonna end up?
Currently, they have a contract with, where it goes to East Central. That's where it would go. Over time, we could, we would keep that contract. We would look at the cost. We have looked at the cost from a high level. It's basically the same as if we took it to the other plant, the cost to us. So, either way, it's really, their sewer is very, very small. It's only serving just a couple of places on the north end of their town.
The hotel, Plaza Del Mar.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
That's it.
Water is the big service that they provide.
Another question is, you don't have, if you missed something, that's not a big deal. What's our general customer base besides the city of Boynton Beach? I mean, we're Hypoluxo, maybe now Malapen, Ocean Ridge out west.
Right. We serve, we serve Ocean Ridge. Outside the city, we serve a fairly large area of the county. We serve Ocean Ridge. Oh, man, my mind just went totally blank of all the cities. There's a couple more over there.
Gulf Stream.
Gulf Stream, I think a piece of Gulf Stream. Briny Breeze. I knew I was forgetting one. Am I forgetting one?
Village of Gulf. Do we serve that?
Well, no, Village of Gulf, we have an interlocal agreement with to help them in emergencies, but they have their own water plant, so we do not serve Villages of Gulf. We do take their sewer bulk, so we do treat their sewer, but we don't serve them water.
The, the people we provide water for outside the city limits, there, is there like a surcharge?
In unincorporated county, there's a twenty-five percent surcharge, yes.
So, how is the agreement with Malapen going to differ from that?
That's a negotiable item. We don't know. That's really that rate distribution study to see. I mean, that's one, I mean, I can give, my recommendation's gonna be that if you're inside a municipal boundary, then you don't pay the surcharge, because the surcharge, there's a certain reason for the surcharge, and you really don't meet that reasons inside. But, again, that is a, is a negotiable item, because, again, we have to recover seven point four million dollars under these numbers. If it takes the twenty-five percent surcharge to do that, that's what we would do.
So, Ocean Ridge and Gulf Stream don't pay a surcharge?
One does, one doesn't. It was negotiated in the interlocal agreement.
Thank you.
It is motion on the floor to.
Proceed.
To proceed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. You got direction.
Thank you.
Okay. We got, we had removed ten B, ten C. Discuss and approve the city of Boynton Beach legislative priority list for the two thousand.
Wait, wait, wait. What happened to ten B?
We had removed it from the, in the beginning of the meeting. We removed it from the agenda, Commissioner.
We're not going to discuss that?
No. It's been removed.
No, why did we remove it?
We, we don't wanna move forward with some of the changes that we, we talked about in there right now. I think as, as we've had more and more discussions on this, we've kind of raised even more questions, so I'm just asking that the item be removed at this time and give us a little bit more time to possibly bring something back to in the future. I think where your concern is coming for on the insurance issues with the HOAs, Commissioner, we will not be moving forward with charging or requiring that.
See, that's why I wanna make sure it wasn't removed. I'm just saying, because first of all, let me just state this for the record, was that District Two, we had our own clubhouse. I'm just saying, and I was gateway and federal highway, and we had our own meeting place. I'm just saying, when it was torn down, the city stated that we could use those facilities. That's when, and so, that's why, you know, I'm glad it's coming back, but I'm, for the record, it's stated I'm not in favor, you know, charging. Let's move.
Okay. Just, I already read that. Do I have him open for discussion?
I am C.
You see, legislative priority.
Discuss, right. Discuss and approve the city of Boynton Beach legislative priority list for the two thousand and sixteen state of the Florida legislative season.
Vice Mayor, each year we bring, we, we sit down and we brainstorm with Matt Forrest,